Hello, Lydia.
Hello, Lydia.
All right. It's five o'clock in the nose. Everybody ready? Well, good evening. I'll call to order the special meeting of the Federway City Council for March 18th, 2025. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Welcome, everyone. Let's go ahead and get started. So we've got a study session. We will have two items. The first is a presentation from King County Health Through Housing and Shelter Briefing. That'll be 30 to 40 minutes. We'll have Leila Wilson, our Human Services Coordinator, kick us off. And then after that, we'll have an Urban League presentation by the Urban League. We've got also the King County presentation with Kelly Ryder, King County Director of Community and Human Services. The second study session will be for about 15 minutes for a 2% of the Arts Joint Operation Maintenance Facility. With that, I'll introduce Leila.
Good evening, Mayor Farrell, President Kochmar, and council members. Bring up our files, your presentation. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Perfect. All righty. How's everybody this evening? Good. Again, my name's Leila, Human Services Coordinator. I'll be making a brief introduction of our King County and Urban League staff on tonight's Health Through Housing and a brief update on Red Lion this evening. So Health Through Housing.
For the people at Zoom.
Yes.
There you go.
Red Lion, not HGH.
Okay. So again, Health Through Housing Initiative was initiated through the State's House Bill 1590 in 2019 and 2020.
I'm sure they'll bring it up.
To provide homelessness service supportive housing services for our homeless persons throughout King County. At that time, the initiative was then adopted by the King County Council in 2021 and began implementation in 2022. And as of May 2024, King County has partnered with several host cities throughout Seattle, Northeast and South King County. Within that, King County and Urban League have submitted an operating license in compliance with the Federal Way Revised Code that is in compliance with our safety and operations, our standards of conduct, the roles and responsibilities of the key staff. Between Urban League and King County, they will have onsite facility, onsite and facility management, site and facility maintenance of the location, occupancy policies that residents will need to abide by, access to human and social services for residents to maintain stability or increase stability, and procedures for maintaining accurate and complete records. This will be the location, again, located off the Pac Highway in 320, funded by King County and House Bill 1590, which will also be operated by Urban League of Metropolitan Seattle. And for this evening, our presenters will be Kelly Ryder, which is our Director from King County Department of Community and Human Services, Frances Nelson, Health Through Housing Section Manager, Jelani Jackson, Health Through Housing Initiative Manager, Soonery Marshall, Acting Director of Housing and Community Development Division, Kiana Tyeski from Urban League, which is their Housing Director, and Fozzy Bilal from Urban League as well, which is their People, Culture, and Belonging Embolism. And I am going to turn it over to them.
All right. Thank you, Leila, and good evening, Mayor and council members. I am, again, Kelly Ryder. I'm the Director of King County's Department of Community and Human Services, and we are happy to be with you here tonight to give you an update on the two buildings that Leila spoke to, both the building that will be future shelter as well as the building as part of our Health Through Housing Initiative. I will just start by sharing a little bit of opening comments and then turning it over to my colleagues for the details and answering any questions. I think you all have been in this partnership with us since 2021, recognizing that we have an opportunity to do more to respond to South King County's affordable housing and homelessness crises. We are excited to be able to open these buildings, and my colleagues will speak to you about the timeline. But I think the Crip note version is that we are looking to open our Health Through Housing building with rooms opening as early as this summer, as well as our shelter building with rooms opening as early as this winter. And so that is the timeline that we are on for this year. I know that we have spent the last couple of years working on the licensure agreement and permitting that Leila spoke to, and so we are excited to be able to move forward this year to get those buildings open. As Leila spoke to Frances Nelson, my colleague with the Facilities Management Division, we'll be sharing a bit of the timeline and happy to answer any questions for you about our construction process. Jelani Jackson is our new Health Through Housing Initiative Manager, who will be able to answer details about the program. And then we're excited for our colleagues, Fuzy and Kiana at the Urban League, to be able to speak to their work and how they will operate services. I think with that, I am happy to answer questions as we go, but I am looking, and our colleague Frances Nelson has just arrived, so I will turn it over to Frances to be able to walk through the timeline of how we intend to open the buildings this fall.
Thanks, Kelly. Good evening, everyone. It's been a while to give you all a construction update on our project. So in August of '21, we did acquire the building. And from October '21 to May 2022, that building was used for our refugee settlement program. And after the refugees moved out to our Redmond Health Through Housing project, we started to do some preliminary scoping and assessment of the TIs. So that included hardening of the building, you know, adding things like smoke detector covers, building pull covers, removing things like safes. And then during the months of August through July, we did select our operator, which is the Urban League of Metropolitan Seattle. So that selection was made in August of 2022. And then we started having discussions about the operator-specific tenant improvements during that time. And we put a little bit of a pause on that while we were opening up some of our other Health Through Housing projects. But then in August of 2023, we engaged our Work Order Architects in earnest to have the discussions with the City of Federal Way about zoning and building permits. And so we determined at that time that both land use and building permits were required. And so we submitted the land use application in January, and then that permit was then issued in July. We followed up with the building permit submittal in March, and then that was issued also in July. And then we had to go out to do a large procurement to secure a general contractor. At that time, we had to go through the process twice, unfortunately, because the first time we did not receive any responsible bids. So we had to go back again, and that delayed the process much, you know, by about four additional months than we had anticipated. But in February of this year, contractors finally went on site and they're starting construction. And I'm happy to show a couple photos of that construction process, but that contractor is Western Ventures, and they've been working on doing the TI ever since. And so we hope our anticipated target for residents to move in under a temporary certificate of occupancy is in the summer of this year, with the building to receive its full certificate of occupancy later in the fall. Does anyone have any questions on that timeline?
Councilor McDaniel.
Yeah, my question is real quick is, that's kind of interesting, no one bid. You guys know why no one came in for the first set of bids?
We did have, we did have two bids, but they were found to be unresponsive.
Okay.
So I believe the first round was that, I think their insurance, they didn't meet the insurance requirements.
Okay. And the second question I have real quick is, the big gap between like when we actually had the refugees in it, what needed to be changed that was acceptable for them that's not acceptable for the new standard of living requirements? That's one of the things that's kind of confused a lot of us is why we had to do any improvements. If it was okay for one, why wouldn't it be okay for the next group? Like, what had to be changed out?
Well, there are two different groups. The refugees mainly, were families with young children. And in our typical Health Through Housing projects, we found that people will like to tamper, especially with the smoke detectors. So that's something that we found that we needed to do, like add cages, just to prevent any tampering of the smoke detectors in those rooms. Typically with the refugees, we found that was not an issue. No one was tampering with those smoke detectors. Lighting upgrades, you know, it's typically better to have more lighting in our Health Through Housing facilities. It wasn't much of an issue for the refugees. So there are things like that. And I could go on with some more hardening activities, like even moving things like removing the latches on the doors. That's something that we do for all Health Through Housing facilities. Yeah, for sure.
I think the other thing that I will note, a couple things. One, the work that we did with the refugees, we always knew was temporary, a few weeks to a few months. And so we were really makeshifting our service space with that. There were a couple of, I want to say there were like conference rooms or other kind of general rooms that we were able to use for like the sewing club that we set up for refugees, but there wasn't really intentional service space. And so part of the tenant improvements that we will make is to make sure that there are rooms where our case managers can meet with residents and be able to really have the space where our operator staff, as the Urban League will speak to, will be able to be on site. The other thing just to note is that the operation under serving refugees, we knew was always temporary and really at the support of the city to not re-permit the building and get a new building occupancy as well as licensure agreement under your current city code. And so given that we really needed that in place in order to do the long-term operations, that was part of the kind of pause and reset and making sure that in the long term, we were operating under those city requirements before we launched into the more permanent use of the building.
Thank you.
Councilor Honda, then Council President Kochmar, and then Councilmember Dovian, then Councilmember Walsh.
So when you open this summer, how many beds will be available?
For the first phase, it'll be 16 rooms.
And that'll be in June?
That will be most likely at the end of July, maybe at the end of July, early August.
And then in the fall, which is September, are you opening the entire facility?
Entire facility. And that, that is 76, 87 units total.
So what improvements have you made besides taking, you know, protecting the smoke detectors? What improvements are you making?
Right. So this, this building is a former extended stay. And what that means is that it's, they were just units. There was no community space in the building whatsoever. So that is a large part of the tenant improvement is to remove five of the existing rooms and create a large community gathering space for residents. We're also creating a warming kitchen. We're creating offices on each floor and also meeting room space on each floor. And those are the interior tenant improvements. The exterior tenant improvements include a amenity and smoking shelter, gardening space. And part of those exterior tenant improvements is a requirement of the land use code to provide a certain amount of exterior amenity space.
So will the rooms still have the stove top and the refrigerator and the microwave?
That's correct. No microwaves.
No.
Just, yeah, it's just the range, sink, refrigerator, yeah, full kitchenette, but no microwaves in the room.
And how will the first 16 occupants be chosen?
That is an operations question, so I will defer that to the Urban League.
Okay. Or I can wait if that's coming.
I wonder if it works for you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. If Frances can continue with the presentation on the schedule and the construction part, then we can get deeper into the service and operations later in the presentation. But we're happy to answer any questions instead if you would rather go along with questions. Does it work to finish the presentation?
Yeah, let's go ahead and finish it.
Okay.
Finish the presentation. We can, unless, let me, Council President Kochmar.
Well, I just want to, we are talking about the extended stay. And before you go any further, 87 units is less than we had been told previously. Most of those will be from Seattle, is that correct?
No, that...
Yeah, happy to speak to the residents as well. And I might just ask my colleagues to come and sit so that we can field questions as we go, because I want to make sure that you get the details that you need. So the number is probably adjusted from when we first purchased the building. That is in order to flip the rooms into service spaces Frances talked about. The residents specifically will be chosen through a process that I will let Jelani and Urban League go through. But I just want to remind you all that we do have a commitment under these buildings to make sure that the first third or 30% is selected specifically based on prioritization of Federal Way and South King County residents. The next third is a partnership with the regional referral process that often speaks as well to local preference. And then the final third is also South King County Federal Way priority, as long as Federal Way is able to fill those units with folks that you have identified. So I think we're having that conversation with Leila right now about how those residents will be chosen, but really it ends up being two-thirds generally that we know will be Federal Way in the surrounding communities. Right now, all of our buildings across Health Through Housing, Jelani can help me out. I want to say it's about 90%. 86% of our residents do meet that local community preference right now. So that will be our intention with Federal Way as well.
With all due respect, we've had so many different responses to our questions on how they're going to be handled, especially the drugs, where they're coming from, because we've had lots of different answers. We've been told that the majority would be from Seattle. I don't know where the City of Federal Way has a say in what's going on.
Okay.
And I don't know if I have any confidence at all in what Urban League is going to do, because I've heard that their response rate or their success rate has been 5%. And so, you know, for us just to house people without getting treatment, we're concerned about that. But I'm not going to say anything more. We'll go on with it and talk as we go.
All right. Councilwoman Dovian.
I just have a construction question for you. I found it interesting when you said that the difference was, you know, what fire, the way the maintenance was between the groups. Do you have in your plan, like, is it going to be five years where you have to go remodel it again? Or is it three? Or is it seven? Or how does that, because you're going to, we're going to have construction permits as we go, and is there a timeline you found that kind of is what it looks like? Because the rooms are going to have to go down and then get rid of done.
Yeah, that is a great question. And with this project, we have benefited from opening several other Health Through Housing projects. And so, for example, we, in past projects, we have kept a lot of the carpet in our buildings. And just, you know, a year, year and a half later, we have then replaced that carpet for more resilient flooring. In this case, we are replacing the carpet from the get-go. So we know that that will be, that we won't have to replace that in a year. That's really the main, one of the main issues. We are replacing also the door hardware, you know, getting a more robust key card system, access control system on the site. At other, at other projects, we have waited a year or two before that system has begun to fail. But so there are some projects that we know, that we've just benefited from past experience and we're doing right away. This is a relatively new fire panel, fire access system, so we're not too concerned about replacing that right away. It's mainly flooring and just access control. And things like unit turns, you know, we would expect that as one resident moves out, that there's typically some upgrades that need to happen. For example, we've switched out some faucets, intimated faucets, faucets just to control the water access. So there's some lessons learned that we've taken from past projects.
Hey, thank you very much.
Yeah.
And Councilwoman Walsh, did you have a quick question?
Yeah, a couple of things. One is, it sounds like you're opening in phases now. But, you know, with all the work that needed to be, that you say needed to be done, why couldn't have, if it's being done in phases anyway, why couldn't have been started a couple of years ago in phases? And first let some people move in the way it was with the refugees, and then little by little, go ahead with the improvements?
Yeah, that's a great question. I mean, it really came down to, it's just the procurement process. I mean, we are limited, just with the amount of the construction costs, if it's over $500,000, we have to go out to public bid. And so that process does take some time. We need to prepare all the construction documents. We need to have the permits in place. So that process did, did take some time, more time than we anticipated.
Yeah, I mean, it's been, you know, four and a half years. But the other thing, and I think this would be more for Kelly, is one of the first things that you mentioned was that it's been, however long that you've been in a partnership with Federal Way, I think that most of us here don't feel like it was a partnership at all. I think that we feel like that it was you dictating to us what was going to be happening. There was no partnership, when I think that there should have been a partnership. And I'd like to know what can be done to actually create some type of partnership rather than, you know, this is the way it's going to be and you keep us in the dark.
Yeah, I will just take that on Councilmember Walsh. I appreciate the direct feedback, and I think that that is fair. We have not been as present in Federal Way as I would like us to be. Part of that Frances spoke to the schedule was us getting other buildings up and operating. I think through our licensure agreement, my hope is that we have made clear commitments to you all about operating within the standards that the city has set and where there are specific other ways that we can make that a partnership, but still be within the Health Through Housing approach and what we are funded to be able to do, then I'm happy to have that feedback, both as part of today's meetings as well as follow-up. If there are community conversations that we need to be having, or if there's other details that we need to be working out, my commitment to you all is to make sure that you get accurate and thorough information and that we do show up to the table in a way that shows that we both are going to meet the values of our Health Through Housing approach in making sure that folks have access to housing in the way that we know nationally is proven to be effective. And we do that in a way that Federal Way is going to be able to trust us and know that we are here to be good partners. So I take the feedback, and I'm happy to continue talking about ways that we can do better.
Thank you. I look forward to the trust being created.
Thank you.
All right, great. Thank you, Kelly. So Frances, maybe we just, let's go ahead and finish the presentations and then when we said 30 to 40 minutes, should we basically say quarter till or what do we think? Council, let me ask you, we've got a 15, let's just make sure how much time I've got real quick, that we have. We've got for the study session for 2% of the arts, we said about 15 minutes. Council, how much time would you like to have between ending the meetings and the regular city council meeting? Is 15, is 15 enough? 10:15? Okay. All right, we do. Okay. So we can actually let this one go a little bit closer to the top of the hour with that.
Okay.
I do, yes. Councilmember Asefa Dawson is appearing remotely.
Okay. So I just have a couple of construction photos of the community room spaces getting, starting to get demoed on the left, and then the landscaping area, the community garden, as well as amenity shelter, just the groundwork starting to take place on the right-hand side. Part of my other update is to update you all on the Federal Way Red Lion project, the shelter. My group within the Facilities Management Division is also managing the construction process on this one as well. So just to give you a timeline, we acquired the building in September of 2021. Shortly thereafter, the building was contaminated and we went through a testing and abatement process, which wrapped up in February of 2022. And there is a little bit of a lag in that timeline where unfortunately, a few months later, we had a pipe burst in the building due to the weather. And so during that time, we were just trying to figure out what to do with that building. We did have initial scoping of possible tenant improvements that needed to be made, really light tenant improvements on that building. The operator was confirmed in August of 2022, which is Catholic Community Services. We engaged our Work Order Architects in July of 2023, and we started meeting with the city last year. And we did have a pre-application meeting in May of last year. Again, during that time, we were still trying to figure out the best path forward for that building. In the meantime, we started making our plan to get that building back online, turning back the water on. We did recently submit a land use permit just about a week ago. We are aiming to submit our building permit in May and then hire one of our job order contracts. Luckily, we will not have to go through procurement on this one, just for them to do some initial tenant improvement work, which is essentially creating a warming kitchen area and a gathering space in that room and just some really basic tenant improvement upgrades, some flooring, adjusting the counter space, adding a vestibule in that building. And we anticipate beneficial occupancy. And we anticipate beneficial occupancy in fall of this year. We are reducing the scope on that building just to stay within budget. So, the plan is to bring 56 rooms online. There will be shared double occupancy in those rooms. So, we are planning on having 112 residents in that building in the fall.
Okay.
And yeah, and that's, that's it.
All right, thanks Frances. Any questions on that so far about Red Lion? Councilwoman McDaniel?
Do you guys have any concerns with the Sound Transit coming in and that property still being in question?
Kelly. I will take that one. We are in communication with Sound Transit and our approach does reflect some amount of uncertainty, as you note. We are continuing to work with them. I think you all probably have the same information I do about them trying to figure out their path. And so, given the timeline for their construction, as well as the construction budget that Frances' team has been able to navigate through to really make this affordable for the county to be able to bring these rooms online despite the water damage, we feel confident moving forward at this stage and we will continue to assess what it means for us to be able to bring the rest of the rooms online based on the Sound Transit construction plans.
Gotcha. And my only last question is how many rooms are actually in the Red Lion? You said you're going to bring on 56. How many are actually, what's the capability of that location?
Yeah, the total, let's see, I have that number, the total number of rooms. I'm going off of memory here. I thought I had that number with me. I believe it's, I believe it's 98, but I don't, I need to follow up with you on that exact number.
So, you're going to bring on about over half then?
Yeah, over half.
Thank you.
Council President, Councilwoman.
So, if you said this, I apologize, I missed it. What are you doing with the pool area?
We're hoping that, we hope, we're hoping that we have extra funds to decommission the pool completely and to fill it in. We have emptied the pool, so it is drained right now. But the goal is to decommission that pool completely and fill it in.
And then what?
We have not had a construction plan to be able to reuse that space. My understanding is there may be some interest in trying to figure out other creative ideas to serve similar populations and we are open to that discussion. For right now, our goal is to make sure that we preserve all options. And I think that that speaks to opportunities for future partnerships.
Sure. So, good. So, if you'll partner us, we would like to talk to you about the day center and how we might combine the two together because your overnight shelter would definitely go in partnership with the, with the day center and we can try to get you money through the federal government. So, not now, but possibly in the future. So, you know, again, that partnership is really important that we communicate back and forth because we're, we're very interested in the overnight shelter. We're not so interested in housing people who are using drugs in another area that's close to an apartment and a school. So, just letting you know that.
All right. Councilwoman Debbie.
Yeah, a couple of questions. On the Red Lion, you've said that the Catholic Community Services is going to run it. How long do you generally give someone a contract to run a project like this?
Why don't we follow up with you on that? I believe our standard is five years, but I want to make sure that we're.
The reason I'm asking the question, Council President brings up a big point about the day center, and they've been established in our community for a while. And, you know, continuity of how long someone has a contract and how long they work actually makes deals happen, not let's move something one place to the other and it's short-term. So, that's why I asked that question. The other thing, you talk about 56 residents and two people to a room, and I'm sure you've done this all over the county. How does it work? I mean, they're not usually husband, wife, or two friends, you know? I remember when I went to college, you got your Durham member and you liked them or you didn't. I mean, how does it work when you put potentially two different people that aren't on the same page in the same room? Do you have more police calls or do you have more 911 or what happens?
It is a balance, as you note.
Everything's a balance.
And our approach here is to try to balance best what used to happen with congregate shelter where everybody was sharing space together with limited number of serving folks when you only serve one to a room. So, two is our goal. The staff onsite will be there to make sure that they are understanding where there might be roommate relationships that need addressed. And that kind of flexibility in building management will be necessary in order to make sure that this is effective. But we think that it is the best way to serve as many folks as possible in Federal Way.
So, do you have additional security onsite? Or, I mean, you're, you've been doing this for a while, so you have best practices, I'm sure.
There are best practices. CCS as the operator would be able to best speak to them. So, if you'll allow me, I'd be happy to follow up on more detail about their approach for staffing the building. And I believe as part of the licensure agreement that we need to submit, that will give you the detail about how they intend to staff the building and manage it.
So, my follow-up question on what you just said, you're more of the developer and make the goods happen and then it gets turned over to whoever gets the contract to make it executed? Is that kind of what I'm hearing?
That's generally true. I think the part that I will reinforce is we hold that contract. And so, I see it as my job to make sure that the provider is holding accountability for any commitments that we have made to the city as well as providing good services.
Right. So, the next step questions, you're building it, you're the developer, you're doing a great job with what you have. Our role at a city council would then be to work on the rules and regulations with the, the operator to get the benefits that you've heard, everybody wants up here to have a collaborative, successful program, correct?
I think that's a great frame for that partnership, the way that I understand your city code right now.
Yeah, so you're, you're the builder and how it runs is going to be the operator, which is the Catholic Community Services.
That's right. And we will hold both the construction contract and also the operator contracts where we also have our terms for how operations need to happen.
And then, do you have the flexibility if a contractor doesn't meet the city's desires, requirements of the community to cancel them and get somebody else?
I would say there's two frames and they intersect. The city has a process right now that ensures that you have to, and I don't want to speak to the city code, so if somebody please correct me, but have to operate within the bounds of your approved licensure agreement. And my goal is to make sure that the contract represents our discussions about how we properly operate shelter and the commitments that we have made to you all.
And one last question, this is kind of off the wall because it's not a development one, but, you know, we see a lot of things happening in the government where funding's getting cut and being re-diverted to something else. When you have these contracts, do you foresee any issues coming up where funding that's been counted on to make this project work all of a sudden disappear and everybody's got to scramble? I mean, it's got to be in somebody's planning somewhere. You've talked about it, I'm sure.
We have talked about it and I will say directly to you, it is absolutely in the planning process. The state and federal funds right now are somewhat uncertain. We can absolutely rely on some county funds that we have, but those sources are very specific and narrow. And so, we continue to work on balancing our shelter portfolio. From what I have heard from the city before, and I say that because I want to make sure that I'm gathering it correctly, this is an important priority for South King County. And I appreciate when cities are wanting to embrace shelter as part of their communities. So, we have put this as a priority. And my hope is as we continue to plan around that funding predictability, we will be able to continue to prioritize it and that is what our current budget would do.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Assefa Dawson. Councilwoman Assefa, there you are.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you all for the presentation and to Kelly and to me. Sorry, can't be there. My comment is actually a little bit different. I do appreciate the third and third and third. What is it? I mean, set aside for the population we serve because I'm also hoping as Federal Way people go to other housing approved, help with other programs, that they will be welcomed and feel like they are okay to be there rather than hearing other cities saying that they don't want to accept Federal Way residents. So, I really appreciate that and I am okay with the way it's set up because I know Federal Way people also go to Seattle and other mainland cities. So, I'd like us as city council and residents to be very aware of that and cognizant and open to the idea that the way it's set up is the way it should be because the funding doesn't only come from Federal Way or, you know, right now we're not even contributing. So, I would just agree with the way it's set up. And just wanted to make that comment. And yeah, my other one was about the pool and that's already discussed. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Assefa Dawson. All right, Councilmember Honda.
Thank you. So, with the Red Lion, will it be the third, third and third again? So, the first third, Federal Way residents, the second, third?
That is an operations question. I will pass it on to Kelly.
Yeah, as we develop the licensure proposal, we will be determining how to manage referrals and what that looks like. The shelter referral system looks very different than a housing referral system because it is a much more evolving residency. And so, if there are standards that the city has, we would be happy to talk about that. My commitment to you all is that I see this as a South King County and Federal Way resource and I want to make sure it operates that way.
So, this is emergency housing, correct?
This is shelter.
Shelter. So, does that, does shelter mean that they can spend more than one night and they, they don't have to leave at 7:00 in the morning?
Again, if you'll allow me, I will follow up on that because we would, we didn't bring our operations team for the shelter site. We only brought our development team and they would have those details. But traditionally, which is what I can speak to, our shelter process for these types of buildings, yes, does allow more than one night. And the idea is that you don't have to have the uncertainty of whether you will have a shelter bed, but that you can stay and know that that will be your room night in and night out.
And is there a limit as to how many nights they can stay?
Not typically.
So, then what's the difference between that and the health through housing?
The difference concretely, I would say, is a lease. In a shelter, you would be participating as a service participant, but you wouldn't be a lease under the landlord tenant act.
So, you said that there's, what, 90-some rooms at the Red Lion, but only 56 are going to be built out? Is there a reason for that?
Yeah, I, I can speak to that. It's because during the, the water freeze event, a lot of the rooms were damaged. So, we had to remove a lot of drywall because of mold issues. And so, we're just going to close off a good portion of those rooms. And when more funding becomes available, we will want to open those rooms back up again. But just due to, we are under very tight budget constraints. So, in order to make this project work, we had to just leave about, let's say, 40 rooms offline while we make our budget work to open up those 56 rooms.
Have you done that in other cities too? Or is, you know, Federal Way has, the only shelter we have is the family shelter. So, this is really important that we have shelter here. And in South King County, it's possible we have more homeless folks that need shelter than maybe other areas of King County, perhaps, I'm not sure. I realize King County has a huge budget deficit and they're talking about some very severe cuts. I would hope that this isn't going to be one of those cuts because we have waited so long for this to open and it's a very serious need in this community.
I agree. And we do have this funding allocated to get these rooms online. So, there's no plan to remove that funding to get these initial 56 rooms online.
Will there be an expectation that the city of Federal Way is required to provide any funding for this program?
Kelly, say no.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Tran, then Councilwoman Debbie. And then, then after that, we need to move to the Urban League presentation, if that's okay. We've got Kiana and Fozzy that we need to get up in front of us. Councilwoman Tran.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a question regarding the, the final cost of the building, the purchasing cost and the construction improvement and all that. So, that one piece. The other piece that I would like to know is the ongoing cost where we have to pay for the contractor to maintain and to operate that, that building. Do you have that number by any chance?
Yeah, for the shelter, we've allocated $2 million for the construction and tenant improvement costs. We did spend about, about half a million dollars just in the initial, we've, we've completely fenced the entire site and we added gate, we've created a secure access and we replaced some of the, like the P-TAC, the mechanical heating cooling units within that initial half million dollars. So, I think, all said, I think we're spending about maybe 2.6 in this initial phase. The, the acquisition costs of this building, I would have to look up that number. I don't have that number off the top of my head. The, the, the third part of your question was the operations budget?
Yes, the, the ongoing yearly.
The maintenance?
Yes.
I, I don't have the full operations cost, but the county does pay for things like the electrical, things like, and we do have a budget included for the operators such as landscaping, maintenance and that sort of thing, but I'm not, I don't have that number either off the top of my head. So, that's something that we would have to get back to you on.
That's fine. Thank you.
Councilwoman Debbie.
Yeah, just a follow-up question on what we just, was just asked. I hear you say it was $2 million to build the, enough for the 56 residents. If there was another $2 million, could you finish the whole building?
Yes, I believe we could. Yep.
I mean, I'm not asking you for $2 million, but if there was $2 million, the whole building could be finished, correct?
Yes, yep.
And would the county cover the operating or is that not in their budget?
That's a great question. I'll, I'll give that one to Kelly.
Yeah. Anytime that we get into numbers on open council, my suggestion would be that we follow up in writing just to make sure that we're not making a deal today that we can't follow through on later.
No, yeah, and I appreciate it.
So, we will follow up both, Councilmember Tran, on your questions about the total acquisition and operation costs. I think the general response that I would say in terms of operations is scale is always helpful. So, while there would likely be a bit of an increased staffing for serving a doubled number of residents approximately, it would be on the margins.
Sure.
And it is absolutely our goal, again, assuming that Sound Transit and the building have a long-term agreement to us being able to continue to operate the building, to be able to scale it up consistent with our agreement with, assuming that the city would agree for us to do that.
Okay. I'm asking the questions, this is grenade level. We're not trying to get specific, but, I mean, we have a problem in Federal Way. Everybody knows that. We have a day center problem. And you're telling me we're only going to build half of the building because we don't have $2 million. So, it seems to me that there should be a collective, and Susan over here talked about the county, are you going to build the whole thing, is what I think you heard. I mean, we got to be part of the solution too, potentially. And if this is really important and we have something happening and we're talking $2 million and we're going to miss the opportunity to do what we really need to do in Federal Way, that should be the discussion we're having, not here's what we're doing on Red Lion, we should be talking about the next $2 million so you can do the whole project, move the day center over there and get a win-win for everybody. I just throw that out as something we should be thinking about.
Thank you, Councilmember. Council President, do you have something?
Well, that's where we would go to our legislators and ask for, that's why we need to partner.
Well, we go to the legislatures, but we also may have to step up ourselves and make a decision. And, I mean, there's all sorts of ways we have to do. I'm just saying, let's not just let somebody else make the total decision.
So, it's a good perspective and it's, and it's important that we have this discussion right now. Frances, thank you, Kelly, and for, for being ever, ever ready and present and we're so thankful that you're here tonight. Frances, did you have anything else in regard to your presentation?
No, I, I'm done. Thank you.
All right.
We appreciate you.
Great job, Frances. Thank you. Okay, now I think we're ready for Kiana and Fozzy.
Mayor, may I ask, so the funding for this came out of the, the tax that we May I, may I ask, so the funding for this came out of the, the tax that we gave to King County to, for shelter. Isn't that correct, a few years ago?
So the funding for each building is unique. So the Health Through Housing building is funded by the Health Through Housing sales tax that was approved, that cities had the opportunity to take independently instead. And so, yes, Federal Way is part of our funding for that structure. The Red Lion building has been funded by a different funding source, and that is made up of commerce grants from the state as well as local funding, both relying on federal funding as well as some other local housing and shelter resources.
So are you waiting for more federal funding?
For the Federal Way building?
For the Red Lion?
Not at this time.
Okay. Because it may not be coming.
Correct. We have, we have moved through that, and that has been part of our construction planning over the last year or so, is really making sure that we have that budget locked in, and we feel confident moving forward this year.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Fozzy?
Actually, we're gonna do-
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
We're actually gonna talk about the Health Through Housing program, and specifically, we're just gonna focus on the interest of time, just focus on the local referral process. That was a question that was raised tonight. So we're gonna get right to it. So here is a breakdown of the local referral process, and think of it broken down into roughly thirds. And you can see down below, we've got some selected partner organizations that our operator's gonna work with. That's how we're gonna find local folks and bring them indoors in Federal Way where they have connections to. There's this regional referral process where, yes, we can pull folks in from the region. It's roughly thirty-five percent. And we partner with the coordinated entry system to find those folks. But these undesignated units, I think, is where you're gonna find the most interest. And so there's two things I'd like you to, to keep in mind. Number one, the first preference is for folks who have ties to this community. Two is that we have sixty days where we go and talk to case managers, those organizations we just talked to, people in the network to say, hey, find me somebody with ties to this community, so we can bring them back to Federal Way. And they've got sixty days to fill that, that unit. And here's the results. So portfolio-wide right now, eighty-five percent of all Health Through Housing residents do indeed have ties to the local community. And we feel like this is a major win for Health Through Housing. It's a way for us to truly deliver on that regional approach and provide solutions to the communities that we have sites in. There's one more data point I would just like to show. You, you all have this presentation. You're welcome to pruse on your own, on time after this meeting. But ninety-six percent of folks in Health Through Housing, who have, live in Health Through Housing apartments, they actually maintain their housing. So they actually reached a place of stability. And I'll speak to this as a, as a social worker who worked in supportive housing for many years with the Veterans Administration. When you give somebody a chance to have stability, to actually have a safe place to sleep every night, something that they can count on, a door that they can lock, they finally feel safe, and they can partner with the operator to actually work through some of those challenging times that they may have had on the streets. And they can start to recover and rebuild their life, whether that's addressing health priorities, rebuilding relationships with families, attaining employment and whatnot. So that concludes my presentation. Let's get to our operators here, just so we can get to them.
Thank you, Jelani. Hold on, Jelani, hold on for a second. Councilmember Honda?
How do you determine if an individual has ties to the community?
Yeah, so there are a couple pieces. Either they've lived here, they've worked here, they have family here, or they were homeless on the streets here. So it is folks who spent an appreciable amount of time in the very community that we're trying to rehouse them in.
So an appreciable amount of time on the streets could be a week or less, or what are you looking at? Just because I know the community's gonna ask.
Sure, yeah. I'd like to be able to give you the most fullest answer I can. So what I'll do is I'll go back and work with my team to give you those exact steps.
Thank you.
Yeah, what constitutes connection to the community? Yeah, I think that's, that'd be great, just so, just so we could be transparent about it, provide that information. Councilmember Daniel?
Just a quick one. You had selected partner organizations. Is that subject to change if new organizations come into the city or some leave?
Absolutely. Yeah, we wanna partner with the community as broadly as possible. The way that we solve the problem of homelessness is we, we open it up to the community, we bring folks in. In addition to that, local law enforcement, I find, knows these folks by name. And so anywhere where we can find collaboration, we wanna do that. Because we really do wanna serve the community of Federal Way.
All right. Thanks.
Great. Okay. All right. Thank you, Jelani. Okay, now.
I'm just switching the presentation for them.
I have a question.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Lydia.
Yeah, sorry. Do you anticipate, I know you said you're gonna, you're looking to opening it in July. Do you anticipate any other things that could delay this date or timeline, and what can we as council or as city do to make sure that the facility is available and open on the timeline that you have?
For the Health Through Housing project, the only anticipated delay may be the mechanical system that we're putting in, into the community space. That is something that we received an update on this morning. We are looking at alternatives to the proposed mechanical system for that space. So that's the, the only potential anticipated delay. That would not delay that initial temporary certificate of occupancy opening. So those initial sixteen rooms, we do not anticipate any delays purely because that community space is outside of that scope.
All right. Thank you. All right. We have less than ten minutes before we need to move to our next topic.
Okay. Thank you for, for having us tonight. And so we, we wanna share a little bit about our organization. My name is Fuze Bilal. I'm the Ombudsman for Urban League Metropolitan Seattle. And that role is very specific to this city and this project because I will be working with, with the, the community to make sure that we're, we're addressing the needs of the city as well as our residents. And I'll start by, won't go through our whole history, but we, we have been founded in nineteen-ten. And Urban League's been around for a long time. We have ninety affiliates. We serve three hundred communities. We're a national organization. And, and we've been created to, to address racial segregation and back in nineteen-ten. And we continue to do that work. And our office in Seattle is one of the largest ones in the nation, and we, we get kudos for our work all the time. So we are, I wanna, I wanna highlight a couple key things that are centered around our residents in this project. So we're not just a housing organization. We are, we provide all of these programs, workforce development, public health, education. Housing is one of the things that we do, entrepreneurship, and then also our newest branch is the Eco District, which is our advocacy and civic engagement processes. So when we think about our project, we think about bringing those services to our residents, making sure we address their health first. And I'll go back to this slide just for the sake of time. So healthcare, we connect folks to, we plan to connect the residents to healthcare enrollment and insurance and address their health needs. We have our Career Bridge Program, which has been very prominent. So job training and linking our residents to jobs, and also criminal records expungement program that helps folks address any issues they have there. And I'll go back to our staffing, and I'll invite my colleague, Kiana.
Okay. I'm Kiana Tieski. I am the Director of Housing of Urban League of Metropolitan Seattle. And I'm gonna talk about our staffing, which is, we'll have twenty-four-hour staffing, twenty-four-seven. We'll have security twenty-four-seven as well. We'll have management, case management, behavioral health team onboard. We'll also have a provider with nurses that we can connect to in the building. As far as their, our intake process, the referral system, I have a team that has already been in Federal Way, that has been working in South King County for the questions about how are we gonna link to people who are already here. I already have a team in process that is an outreach team, that they connect people to shelters, any housing already. So they will, they are, they are familiar with Federal Way, and that's who will, who they will be focusing on is Federal Way in South King County. They work in Auburn all the time, and that's, that's what they will be doing. They are familiar with the places out here. There's Fusion. We have different places that we, when they come in, they're, they're assessed. And so if they do have any behavioral health problems, we are connected to Valley Cities. Depending on the severity, they'll be able to be referred to any, sorry, any behavioral health side. We're connected to American Behavioral Health Systems, Sound Mental Health, and then other detox programs as well.
And this is a, we prepared for, for a forty-five-minute presentation. We're trying to give you the most important things, but I think this is really important to know. We have, we're here to be part of the solution. We, we, that's, that's our goal. This is what we're good at as an organization, and we've done that in several locations. We're here to be part of the solution and help the community in Federal Way. We've reached out to the, to our, to develop partnership with the police chief. Great conversation so far. And we plan on inviting his team toward, to the, to the facility and help us, we share, and help us create some good communication so we can address any potential issues. We have shared our code of conduct and requested feedback with the chief and his staff. We have a liaison that we're working with already. And also, we plan on having several events that will invite the community in because we wanna hear your feedback. And this is a very complex, as, as we all know, homelessness is a very complex issue, and it's gonna take all of us, as our colleague Jelani said. And we're here to partner. We're here to hear from you, and we're here to refine our services to best meet the needs of the city and also our, our residents.
Okay. And the difference between the shelter and our facility, they'll have case management onboard, and they'll be familiar with everyone that is there. And so they'll have the support that they need. They'll be paid attention to. I know it's not gonna be a perfect place, but at the same time, it's not gonna be just, one day I'll see you, the next day, we don't know where you're gonna be. We're gonna have communication with them. We'll have a list that says, this, have I, have you seen me? And they'll be able to connect or find if the person hasn't came back yet. And we do have another facility that my team has been working on for two years, which they're, they started out with forty-six people. Probably four didn't show back up, and then we, we communicated and got four more people in there. But that's like, they're still maintaining their housing, and it's been two years. A little bit more.
Any questions, or how are we doing with time?
Yeah, we're, we're, we've got a few minutes. Councilmember Honda, Councilmember Daniel, and then the Council President.
This afternoon, I spoke with a council member from the City of Kirkland, and they're having a hotel open soon there. Their council worked with their provider on a document such as a code of conduct. You, you just mentioned you've worked with the police chief, but when will it be presented to us? And will we have the ability to look at it and see if it meets what we as a council would like to see?
Yeah, absolutely. That was part of our application permitting. So it was submitted to the city last year. And we are still, yeah, so I, we assumed that you've, you've had it already. We forwarded it to the chief recently so they can give us any feedback or, or help us assess that.
Okay, perhaps it can, we can look at it too, please? Thank you.
With their operator's license, they did submit their application along with supporting documents as far as in compliance with the Federal Way Advice Code, Chapter Twelve, permanent supportive housing and transitional housing. When they came last year, that information should have been presented to you as it was to my knowledge, but I can also give that to you guys again.
Thank you.
Brian, will you please make sure that that document that was just referenced is forwarded to the council? Great. Thank you very much. Okay, Councilmember Daniel?
Just a couple quick ones. I'm just gonna rapid fire. So the people who will be moving in, are they classified as renters and leasers?
Yes, they will be.
Okay, so they'll have renters' rights associated to them as when they move in? So with the renters' rights association to them, the biggest concern everybody's gonna have, everybody wants a win-win situation. Biggest concern is if you have somebody who becomes a problem child, and if they're renters and they have renters' rights, that becomes a bigger deal to remove that problem child who may bring down the whole operation. So I'd really love to know what your guys' game plan's gonna be for a problem child, to make sure they don't become an issue. And the other thing is, just to make sure I understand this correctly, this is not sober housing. This is just housing. There is rules, and you guys do have a code of conduct, but realistically, it's, they're private residents once they move into that room. Is that correct?
Yes. So there are different-
Can you, I mean, it's, it's a new territory of law.
Kelly, can I interrupt you just for a second, everybody? Hold on. No, we want you to continue thought. I, I just communicated with, with EJ. Because of the important nature of this, why don't we, we're going to, if it's okay with council, let's push or punt the, the two percent for the arts, it's not that time-sensitive, to the next meeting for a study session. Continue this discussion where we're not cutting it artificially short. Is that okay with everybody? And then that way, I also want, Kiana and, and Fuze, I wanna make sure that if there's something that you feel like you haven't said, you know, after, after Kelly gets done or before we wrap up, that you get an opportunity to say that as well. So I, you know, obviously, we had some things on the agenda, and, but we need to modify this. This is very important for our community. With that, is that okay, everybody? Without objection?
Yeah.
All right. I'm, I'm sorry. Councilmember Daniel?
I just, there was a couple comments or questions I had about the ordinance that they were gonna talk about the next one, but it's two weeks, we're looking at kicking it down to the next council meeting.
About two percent of the arts?
Yeah.
Is there anything, is there anything that is time-sensitive?
No, there's no ordinance for two percent for the arts.
There is. There is. We have an ordinance.
Well, no, no.
Nineteen ninety-four.
What's the code, correct?
Yeah.
Ordinance number ninety-four-two-seventeen.
Right, it's thirty-one years old.
That's the ordinance from nineteen ninety-four. So, yeah, it can wait two weeks. That's fine.
Yeah. There's no pending ordinance.
Oh, yeah. No, no, no. My question was about a fund that the money was supposed to go into. That's my only question I was gonna have tonight. So, yeah.
Well, maybe if we get a minute or two. Let's, let's, let's do that. We can, we can nail that down real quick.
Thank you.
Kelly, let's, sorry to interrupt.
Not at all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the complexity that I was gonna speak to is, yes, they have tenant rights. And because we are operating a program on this specific site as the building owners, our expectation when they take on their lease is to sign a program agreement that speaks to the code of conduct. So we still intend to, and the reason that Urban League is on-site is to make sure that folks are participating fully and applying the code of conduct. The last thing that I will note is everything that is illegal in Federal Way is still illegal within people's units. And so kind of between those three things of what tenants must comply with, what our program agreement and code of conduct requires for them to be on-site, and the laws of Federal Way, we will be, we feel confident in managing the building.
Gotcha. And then does the code of conduct has a disciplinary section to it then?
Yes, it's in there.
Okay. I'll, I'll wait to read that, then I'll get back to you on that. Thank you very much.
So depending on the severity, since it is a program, we try to work with people. We don't wanna just kick them out on the streets. It just depends on the severity. Like, if it's somebody that pulls out a weapon and, and harms someone else, that's just, that's not tolerable. They'll get a warning, a verbal warning. This will be like smallest-case scenario, verbal warning, a written warning. Then the next time, they'll have case management with a case managers and a property director. And then it's called a care review. So we'll figure out like, what is the issue? And then, and then the next time, if we can't figure that out, upper management will be involved, including an advocate. And then if there's no compliance to the resolution, then there'll be a comply or vacate, or we'll have to find a better fit for them to stay.
Okay. And I think that, I thought we were short on time. It's gonna be it for me for right now. So thank you very much.
Fuze, did you have something?
Yeah, I just wanna add that we, we do have a developed grievance process as well to, and also a, a process to address any, the code of conduct that complies with, with our staff and everything that we do internally. I also wanna, wanna say that our approach is also- is also, when people show up and they're residents and they go through an interview process, we, there's a, a, a social contract that we assume that they're on their way to recovery. So that's the process. And that's the, the lens that we operate from. And it's important for us to do everything we can to create an environment for them to get well first. So health is the number one priority for us, to make sure that they're on their way, as I mentioned earlier. And then we just want to make sure that they, they get some sort of job training or trying to connect them to self-sufficiency. So that's the next step. And then also making sure to remove any barriers as criminal records if that's the case. We do have 24-hour staffing on purpose on, on the vicinity, including security and the folks that are, that will be there to, to manage the, the residents. We have personalized case management, as Kiana mentioned. We have, we don't know the, we want to make sure that we have, everyone has a case manager there. Job development, as I mentioned, some of the programs and resources we offer, health navigators, who would be administrating physical health and also needs, and also behavioral health needs, and then our security staff, and the legal system, as I mentioned as well. And this is, I'll let Kiana speak to this because this is kind of all the trainings that our staff is required to before they, they engage in this, in working with us in this process.
Well, we are on a time crunch, but there is a list, a long list that you guys can see. Of course, we'll have workplace safety, orientation, harm reduction, bloodborne pathogens awareness, CPR, first aid, harassment prevention for U.S. employees. And these are things that my, most of my staff, because we've been working on this for two years, have already had. And, and the new staff that we hire, plan to hire, will be having the same thing. So I don't know if you want me to go over all of it, but...
I think it, Kiana, I think it'd probably be more instructive to answer the questions of the council, because we've literally, now we do have a hard stop, we've got nine minutes. If that's okay?
That's fine.
Okay.
But those are the things that my staff has been trained on and will be trained on further.
Very good. Thank you so much. Council president?
I have four questions. Thank you, Kiana. So, someone mentioned maintaining space. Maintain, what does that mean? Maintain space?
You mean maintaining their...
Somebody mentioned maintain space. What does that mean?
Maintaining their housing, not space, if that's what you mean.
I, I have no idea.
No, it's maintaining their housing.
Alright. So when you, how do you prioritize the people that you choose? Do you choose people who are down and out and have no, no chance of success? Or do you, do you prioritize people who want to make a change?
It's, it's prioritizing homelessness and the underserved community. So we're not the ones that are choosing. It's, you guys are referring mostly to us. And when we, okay. Sorry. I thought he wanted to say something. But, yeah, we're, you're, they're being referred. So the underserved community, the homeless community, and we're not going to just...
We, we had been told previously that they, that some would be coming from Seattle and they would be long-term, either drug users or alcohol.
Okay. Oh, well, from, who, who has told you that? Where, who?
Whoever came to the podium from King County previously, they had said 85% would be from Seattle. That would be long-term.
That's not true.
So I think it's important to clarify, just that the process, one goes from, I am sleeping on the street, to I'm moving into health through housing. It's quite a long process, actually. And it starts with a person choosing to seek out the services from an operator like the Urban League, to actually get some assistance for housing or healthcare, or mental healthcare, substance use, et cetera. And then they go through an assessment process, they submit paperwork to enter coordinated entry, they agree to services. And so, you know, long story short, there are many, many, many steps that it takes for somebody to actually get in front of an operator like the Urban League. And to be quite frank, again, having worked in that field myself personally for about seven years, some people just filter themselves out of that because they go, that's too much follow-up. And I don't want to take Jalani's phone call at 9:00 a.m., or I don't want to go to the federal building to go get my social security verification and things like that. And so what we find is that folks who, by the time they make it to moving into a health through housing building, they're fully committed to the recovery process and they're really invested in housing. And so that's why we see such robust numbers that I just showed you.
So I, I believe that you all have wonderful hearts and that you're sincere about what you do and that you really want to make this successful. But I would really like to know what is your percentage of success? Are these long-term residents that are going to be staying there as permanent housing? Or are these people who are going to be, as Fusion does, try to get them within a certain period of time on their own?
So with our experience and with our health through housing, it's not health through housing, but it's our permanent supportive housing building that we do have. Earlier, I spoke on, we had 46 people and only four did not remain. So that is, the true percentage, I don't know. But that is...
Okay, so let me ask you this.
And they maintained it for two years already.
Yeah. Okay, so I've asked Urban League before what the success rate was overall, and they said 5%. I don't remember which person said that, but they told me that. So here, whether you agree with that or not, my point is, you know, we've heard lots of horror stories in other cities about what goes on not within, just within the building, but outside the building. And so we're very concerned about how that's going to affect the children in the apartments right next door. That's going to affect the businesses in the area because there will be people who will be panhandling. And there will be people who will be selling drugs because you have drugs as being legal. You, you've just already said, if it's legal in the city of Federal Way or in the state, it's going to be legal there. So it's kind of like a magnet. And we've already had magnets for people who are homeless and using drugs. So we're very concerned about how that's going to affect our, our population. So you don't need to answer that right now. I don't think you have an answer.
I would like to.
Go ahead.
Okay. So as we said before, we do have 24/7 staff. We do have 24/7 security. Also, we have a gated community. It's not just, you can just walk up and sleep wherever. So it's going to be protected as any other place. We also have communication with the police officers. We will be building our, our relationship with them. So if we do need them to come, they will be available for us. Also, I've been around that place because my mom lives right next door, and I don't see people just laying there now when there's nobody there.
Okay, well, then what I need you to do is to work with the city because we, we anticipate problems. And so we're going to need to have a very strong partnership on how to resolve those problems.
Absolutely. And we'll, we'll continue to, to develop those relationships. As we mentioned, you know, we engage the, the police department. We look to, for local referrals and local resources as well. And we're also hosting our community engagement events to get feedback from, from the community on, on ideas, and we'll make sure to incorporate those.
Councilmember, Councilmember Devey?
Yeah, my question's a little bit different. I'm going, I'm going to assume you've been doing this for 90-plus years. You know what you're doing and taking that approach. But you, you've got a five-year contract, I'm assuming, because I heard that's what is given out. What's the monthly cost to run this place for you? And is that contract guaranteed that you're going to have those funds for five years? Because as we see things shifting, if all of a sudden a half million dollars disappears from your budget, are you still able to have, you know, 1.3 people for every 3.4? I mean, how does it, how does this affect your operating, this project, if funding gets cut somewhere in the world of the, the U.S.?
Yeah. It's a good question. I asked that question when I was interviewing for this job in November. How is the, is the funding stable? And thankfully, it's, it's taxed dollars. So as long as people buy things in King County, we, we do continue to receive funding. And actually, but we've seen the funding go up a little bit, too. But we would like to give you a very robust answer to the funding, per-unit funding. You wanted to know monthly, correct?
I'm just curious. You're running a multimillion-dollar business in Federal Way with these people here. You don't, you, you're not selling anything, you're getting it in from taxes, so that's your income. I mean, what's your burn rate of money per month in order to keep this program going? And, because the problem's not in one year, two years, it's in four or five years if something falls out. And I'm just anticipating what that looks like.
Yeah. We'll be happy to furnish the council with the report that you just asked for.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Walsh?
My question. Now, I've heard that, that health through housing has a 95% success rate. But the way that success is measured by, is the percent of people who are still in housing. I mean, there's other measurements of success. I mean, they can still be in housing, but still be on drugs. They can still be in housing and still be unemployed. They can be enjoying a nice warm place to shoot up or whatever. What I would like to know is what other measures of success do you have? Do you have a percentage who successfully complete drug and, and mental health programs? Do you have a percentage that successfully become employed? What kind of other parameters are there for success?
So right now, we're working on our 2024 annual report. And that actually has some data that you're looking for and probably other folks in the council and the community as well. We should be releasing that report in Ju, in June. But I, again, have asked those same questions when I first took on this job. And I'm happy to report that the preliminary data we've gotten back is very positive. It talks about reduced numbers of disentents in hospitals and things like that. So, again, we will furnish you a detailed report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, council, prior to the, well, we're at 10 minutes before the meeting starts. Do you have, Councilmember Honda, do you have a quick question?
I just have a quick question. So folks go in there, they sign a lease. Is anyone expected to make any kind of rent payment?
Or at some point?
I thought that was a quick question.
Sorry. Yes, we, we do ask that folks pay a third of their income towards rent.
And if they're unable to, they are still allowed to stay?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Alright, first of all, I want to say to everyone who came before us today, Leila, thank you very much for teeing all this up and for your work behind the scenes and, and on all that. Kelly Ryder, thank you very much. I'm, you know, Director of Community and Human Services for King County. Jalani, thank you very much. I appreciate your, and that's Jalani Jackson, Health Through Housing Initiative Manager. Kiana, and, and it's Fuze? Okay. Thank you both very much for your presentation. Obviously, we're going to, the dialogue will continue. And I can't, can't leave without saying thanks to Francis. Francis, thank you very much for your presentation as well. And I know I'm forgetting, who am I forgetting?
I didn't talk.
Exactly. Oh, Senator Ray Marshall, thank you very much. Okay, with that, we, our regular city council meeting starts at nine minutes. We'll be adjourned to transition to that next meeting and, and what we have next. So this, this study session is in recess. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.